Our head and the father. We ask for your blessings to them more, just look over the commissioners as they go through these budget processes and go through all the items on the agenda, Lord. Just thank you for the rain that you've been sending. We thank you very much. You know, we needed it in your name with prayer. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, indivisible.
I think we did it smoother without. Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I'm going to ask the court for a little bit of latitude in this area because for the for the time, the three minutes, because I want to have some folks talk about the All-America City that we just went to. That was in Denver. It was an amazing experience, meeting people from all over the country who have different ideas and different problems and different issues that they're dealing with and how they're dealing with them. And we were just not quite a fit for this year's thing. We were to some extent, but they had bigger issues that they were working on. Next year's is about community, and I think we fit that one a little better. This one was more about climate issues and things like that. But I'd like Libby to kind of talk about it a little bit. She loved this whole thing, and she did a fantastic job.
Sure. So I'm Libby Wiggins. I'm with the city of Snyder, and I'm also the affiliate coordinator for Keep Snyder Beautiful. And so we put this application together, just showcasing the collaboration and all the wonderful people who are working on environmental issues throughout our community. And I think it's just an honor to be in top 20. We didn't make it to the top 10, but Snyder was a top 20, and if you saw the competition, it was fierce. So it was a great weekend where it was very busy with conferences, round tables, and I think all of us took a lot back as far as knowledge and learning from other communities, got connected with some free resources that are out there. I've already been emailing this morning, being like, hey, how we can get this to our community. So it was an incredible experience for for everybody that was able to attend. So thank everybody for working on it. It was a collaboration with the county, the city, the school, Chamber Economic Development, and of course, all of our residents who show up every day to help us with all these initiatives. So it was awesome. And if you have a chance, it's still on YouTube. You can go to the All-America City Awards YouTube, and if you skip to like, it was Sunday morning presentations, get to an hour and 54 minutes, you can watch Snyder's presentation. So thank you.
Did you bring the plaque with you?
I don't. I think Eli has the plaque, so we could get a.
We did get a finalist plaque, you know, that they'll be able to hang up in City Hall. And that's, you know, it's it's not the one that says winner, but it is a finalist, and that's that's pretty big in itself. So that's good. Chad, did you want to speak?
I'm going to.
There were there were 20. We're talking Seattle, Tallahassee.
Akron, Ohio.
Akron, Ohio.
They were amazing.
Yeah.
St.
Of course, St. Lucy in Florida.
Yeah.
Three North Carolinans towns. And North Carolina and Florida walked away. They had five representatives, five cities, and all five won. Seattle won.
Yeah.
So it was, everyone won.
Yeah, we were those that didn't win top 10. It was like us, Austin, Albuquerque, term, or who else?
I remember who else that did not.
No, but a lot of people that did win had initiatives that improved their shorelines or waterways. And while they had incredible projects, we just don't experience those same problems. So. And it was all the way up to almost 2 million population with a entire region that was, I think, 16 cities or counties.
Yeah.
And all the way down to us at 11,000. So Snyder represented really well. And we they said we were the funnest city there, so I think that speaks to something.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Court, consider, discuss and consider in a recent project scheduling step.
Bring her on parking lot.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It doesn't rain.
Oh, wait, let me go back just a second. I wanted to remind you all that the Freedom Trail Ride and Run is this weekend. The ribbon cutting is at 8:00 AM. The 5K Run Walk is at 8:30, and the ride is at 8:00, at 9:30. So I'd like to see y'all all there for the ribbon cutting. And then we'll all get on our bicycles and ride the trails.
That's curious, because I don't have one.
I've got an extra bike.
Are you still riding my Gator?
No Gators. No, sir.
That's July 15th.
Yes, sir. July 15th is Saturday. Okay, so y'all are doing parking lots.
Yeah.
Any further discussion here? All right. Court, discuss, Court, wow. Court, to discuss a line RPM to find an electrical provider. So Angela and I, at the request of WTC, Western Texas College, they, when we were at the appraisal district meeting the other day, talking about valuations, we were approached about how they go about looking for an electric provider. They use this company RPM. They don't charge you anything, but they go out and they find the best provider or the cheapest provider for you. And they set you up with contract and bring or bring back to you the best prices that they find. The way they get paid is by contractors, not by the entities that do it. So all the information that I received, and Angela can speak too, sounded like it's a good process to follow. It doesn't put a burden on us. They take that burden off of Commissioners' Court to go and find the cheapest grades.
Our contract with TXU is up at the end of 2026, so we will start having to go out for bids for that. They take care of the bid process. They're kind of like P3. I know you're one of the only ones that is still here from P3, but they're like that. They take care of all that work where we're not the one having to do it. And then they bring it back and say, here's your top providers. Like, we had Constellation one time through P3 and stuff like that. So they do, they would come into a presentation. We wasn't moved any farther forward than that. And I did send them the last invoice so that they could get an idea of what kind of services we would need and what kind of rates we use to usage and all of that stuff.
So we would just sign an agreement with them that allows them to, when it starts, it's not obligatory, and it gives RPM authorization to receive client information from the supplier utility, including name, address, and all that information, types of facilities.
Make a motion for this?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to sound contract RPM for looking for somewhere for a provider, and we'll do it.
Second.
All in favor? Court, consider golf course maintenance contract. Last time this came up, we were late. I didn't want to be late this year. And there's a couple of ways that this can be done. We can continue to bid it out as we have in the past. There were some issues transitioning. We were trying to find the best provider out there at our golf course. However, the law says in Local Government Code, Section 262.0241, mandatory exemptions certain recreational services. It applies to count to a county that has a population of 20,000 or less. We cut that. Owns not more than one golf course open for public use. We only have one. And it says the competitive bidding and competitive proposal procedures prescribed by this subchapter do not apply to the purchase of management services for a county-owned golf course or retail facility owned by the county and located on the premises of the golf course, and landscape maintenance services for a county-owned golf course. So I talked to Mike about this, and he suggested we can follow that. He suggested that when we do, we'll go ahead and have Sid present in a sealed envelope his proposal for fees for his contract. We need to make a decision whether we're going to go ahead and go forward with Sid and renew his contract and determine the length of time, or do we want to go out for bids? If we go out for bids, we are not opening this date because that would give an unfair advantage to whoever bid after the fact. If you would like, we can go ahead and open Sid's proposal, go forward with Sid, and talk about that.
Yeah, I absolutely want to go forward with Sid.
Good job, Ford.
I agree.
So maybe change who we got to work.
Hey, I mean, if you've been out to the course, it is beautiful.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're doing a great job for us. And that's where I stand. I don't see a reason to go out for bids when we've got someone who's doing a great job for us now.
No, really, it don't work.
Do y'all want to go ahead and open this?
Absolutely.
All right. Also, there is thought about three or five years. We've done three years. Talk to Mike. We can do five years if we want.
Sid's not too old, so I think we do five years.
None of this, none of this gray stuff. I mean, you've got lots of it.
It's a wonder on the show. I think he's coloring it.
What are you gonna say? Yeah. And I agree with the way you did this, Sid. So annual is year one for 2026 is 184,000. 3% annual adjustment based on industry standards. When you lock in at three years, you're kind of locked in at that one, and you can't adjust for that. So first year is 184,000. Year two is 189,520. Year three, 195,206. Year four, 201,062. And year five is 207,094. Any thoughts?
I make a motion that we continue with Sid Wiggins with the proposed bid that he has given us for the next five years.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, Sid. Thank y'all. It's gonna be nice working with you for the next five years still. All right, Court, consider appraisal district budget. In our last meeting, you wanted to discuss the appraisal district's budget and what's going on with that. So this is their allocations for 2025. And then 2026 shows the change or increase or decrease, depending on who it is. But ours is an increase. Now, it's a slight decrease from 411,484 to 411,132 dollars. Decrease of 351,83 cents. In this, she states that the reason that it's going down is because they are losing their chief appraiser. But the total decrease of the budget is 476 dollars. I know y'all expressed some concerns about that.
My concern with the merit raises should be that nobody else is giving. They are county employees.
No, they're not county employees.
Well, true, still, Skerr County.
Yes, sir. And those are the raises that you're discussing.
I'm assuming she's continuing to look forward to.
I have not talked to her. I don't, I don't know.
I mean, it's not something that they're going to try to give it out, I wouldn't think. So that's going to go back up. Well, we've been on race every year since I've been here, besides the COA.
Okay, I'm assuming that yes. So if you'll look at right here, that'd be chief appraiser for 25. And then 26, it drops 22,000. So I'm assuming yes, that they're not going to go without a deputy chief appraiser, but that it'll be someone that is, that is going to start at a lower salary.
What's the deputy?
I'm sorry?
The deputy?
Yes, sir.
So they have someone already in place?
I don't think so. I think she will be replacing Ralph at some point. And I don't think she has yet.
I thought maybe someone that she is bringing up that's already working for her.
That's possible, but I haven't talked to her about it, I'm not sure. What are your concerns, and what would you like to say or do about your budget? I guess what message do you want to send to the appraisal district?
I don't say them. Since I've been here, they've got ready, ready to start this every year. Or one of five entities that funds them. You know, everybody's getting a two and a half percent of the COA, but I don't have an issue with that. But I do have an issue with merit raises.
Okay, she did send a page along that shows the COA history. That shows Social Security, Skerr County, WTC, and college. And it shows percentage or total.
I have a question. So are you taking a vote to approve their budget right now? Is this a vote?
This is, this is something that Commissioners requested we discuss. I don't, I'm not sure what we're.
Oh, okay.
We don't approve their budget, though. The board, their board does.
We were discussing the other day, just in ledging with Angela, that we were looking at that, the fact that we were actually, Skerr County's being charged more than others. And we were going to discuss that, the percentage.
Well, every, every year.
It's a.
Angela has done a budget amendment. Am I correct?
Yes. And I will be doing one again for this year, because we're already over, well, we're about, the next payment will, we will be over. We're at, we budgeted 375,000. We're currently at 308,612 and have one more payment of 102,8799 that we have to pay.
Just about every year.
Let me pull up the, bear with me, and I'm going to unplug this for a moment, and then I'm going to look up the 2025, what they sent over for the 2025 budget.
And by the time we got the 2025 numbers from her, our budget had already been adopted because there was some changes in it for the legal fees. In '24, the original budget was 33, 35, 490. And I did a budget minimum of 32, 591, 64 to make it 368,0081, 64. And then.
Yeah. So when, when we received the budget for the allocation, it was 393, 246. And then it went to the final so far listed as 411, 484. So it changed between the time the budget came out and.
Yes, it increased. And her notice on the increase email she sent was due to legal costs.
Right.
But it was already after the budget period.
Do they have any idea how it's, how this is figured between the entities and how much we pay because of the?
It has a, is it on the other one, quarterly? She has it on there by percentage, like where it has in the fourth column over, I think. It's the third and the fourth column. She goes by the tax rate and the percentage of the tax roll that we, whichever entity has. So I guess if you have more people moving into the county, but out of the city and or out of the school district or whatever, it changes, but.
Yeah. So '25, it was .25489. '26, it's .2669.
How much did you say for 20 this year on that one? What did you say for what?
411, 132.
When I add what we've already paid plus the next payment, that's 414,893,96.
Okay. So 2025 on this page shows 411, 484.
So it'll actually be more.
More.
Than what even that is. Unless she changes the last quarter, but that's not ever happened. So I'm not saying it won't. It changes up, but it never turns down.
Let me look at this for a second. See what we budgeted there. We budgeted 450 for this year, this coming year. Last year, we budgeted, for '25, we budgeted 375,000.
They weren't going above that.
And we've got, yes, we've already gone above that. So to preempt that, we budgeted 450,000 this year based, in facing, we this, we budgeted that much before we received their budget. And their budget showed 411,000. We keep the 450, 450,000. That'll give us that cushion.
That says almost as much as what the latter is, as the eighth or.
Yeah. Our percentage of the tax roll is very close. .266 and .294.
Yeah. Wow.
Well, I hate to say this, but I mean, if you give them a cushion, they're going to take it.
Well, I didn't think they were, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess methodology is the only thing that'd be interesting to see how that's figured.
Right.
So what is there, I can see it, the total budget for all the entities that are basing?
1,541,257 dollars.
Can you imagine what it is for all counties?
Right.
254 of them. What it would be total.
Wow.
We're one of the smallest.
Yeah, we are. Can you imagine? Must be a billion.
We need to may I start figuring out. We need to may I start figuring out tax rates.
Like this, if you give them a cushion, they're going to use it.
They're using it anyway. You've bet you three seventy-five, it's four fourteen.
Yeah.
I have another question on that. So I noticed that the hospital had a closed session on Kinder Morgan lawsuits recently. Are y'all expecting to have any discussion about that lawsuit this year or this time?
I have no idea.
Does that show, I can't read that. So does that show how much they're, they're set aside for Kinder Morgan lawsuit for this twenty twenty-six?
Attorneys?
Maybe attorneys or litigation. Legal fees, that's what's on ours. Would be legal fees for any kind of legal stuff.
Is the county's going to go, has, is the budget for the county's legal fees going out in twenty twenty-six?
No.
No?
Our budget, our county legal fees that I budget for are like, if we have a lawsuit involved for specifically just the county. Um, and I'm not increasing that. Or I'm not putting, I'm not proposing an increase in that.
No, that's not listed in the budget.
That's because we budget their legal fees. Sorry.
Well, I was just wondering if they're, if they're, if they had a meeting to say it's continuing or we're going to end it. I, I was wondering if the county knows that at this point.
Uh, it's not listed. However, it was listed in the twenty twenty-five attorney's fees.
So she told me the other day that so far ago, Brian, I got this little over a million dollars in attorney's fees for Kinder Morgan. Since it started.
All told. And we do get bills on occasion for attorney fees. I'm not sure why it's not listed in this year's budget. Or in twenty twenty-six, cause that's when the actual trial or case is, is in February twenty-six. I bet we can expect more. More bills for attorney fees.
I bet if you look in the twenty twenty-five, the first one that she sent, not the adopted one.
Okay.
It might not have been listed there either. And then that's where she had that adjustment because it was a lower amount and then it went up.
You're right.
And it was due to attorney fees. So I bet you it's not listed in the first presentation of the twenty twenty-five was budget. And then it's in the final one later.
Bet you're right.
You said we don't get a final one until they can leave past hours.
Yes.
So, you know, we don't know how much it's going to change.
This one was sent in June. Twenty-four. And it's June twenty-four, twenty-five.
There's a attorney fee. Fifty thousand.
All of the attorney fees. Attorney fees, fifty thousand, okay, it's broken up right there. Same amount for twenty-five and twenty-six.
Fifty thousand, just the, the budget, we need a budget amendment. Is it due to attorney's fees or the?
I don't know. I just know it's the, we just received a quarterly invoice and it's a blanket amount, yeah.
On the intention, we did the one that says attorney fees.
It'll say, but, well, that was the one that we got at the very beginning of the year. It's the first quarter, it says it went up. Our portion was due to increased cost of attorney fees. But that's the only time, it doesn't say that on any of the other ones. So we know like it was different from what was planned in twenty twenty-five because of that. That's the only reason why I do know, but I don't, it doesn't say on every invoice we got. We get it.
So I'm like, we got a bunch of questions. The larger answer anyway.
You want that on the next agenda?
To do anything about it, we would actually have to have majority of votes. With other entities being involved.
I got questions.
Okay.
Themselves.
You ready for the department budget discussion?
No, sir.
When are we starting with the base?
Um, we start where we left off with welfare. There's minor change, ten dollars for postage, two, two hundred down in maintenance agreements. And then, uh, you know what? Oh, actually, this is where you also can see it. I better. And so their budget increased a hundred and ten dollars. Anything to talk about on that? So we'll move on to the library. You're, you're requesting two thousand dollar increase in, in part-time, but you're going down in periodicals, online content, new books, maintenance agreements, equipment and other equipment. A little bit more in education and training and travel. Any thoughts on, you don't want to discuss library or any good with that?
Let me get, let me speak to that one guy.
That was easy, easy.
That's crazy.
Yeah, we could do that math last time we could do.
I know, but I just, yeah.
All right, the senior center. Uh, Tammy's requesting a five thousand dollar increase in a part-time, um, hourly rate. Not, it's not at fifteen, none of her employees are at fifteen yet, but she's requesting to increase each for part-time's hourly rate. So that's why the five thousand. Not to go over fifteen, but to come up twelve, from twelve to thirteen or something like that. Increase in two thousand dollars in food, hundred and thirty dollars for education and training. And then a hundred dollars less in dues, so her budget would increase seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Another department head that does a very good job of holding it in line.
And she does. Excellent. Okay, uh, youth center. Heather, how are you today?
Good.
Good. Heather's asking, asking, so yeah, we kind of got, talked about in her budget meeting, some different options there for the department. And part of that was a full-time education coordinator. And she does, it, she was requesting twenty-five hundred dollar increase in food, but everybody's seen an increase in their food, so. Uh, Heather, do you want to talk about the education coordinator?
Ask for it every year. I really just, I know that the school focuses on test scores, but I mean, we need to focus on the bigger picture before tests. Like the reading levels of the students, the math that they're doing. Um, and having an education coordinator is a consistent person that can go through the schools. Because it's not just us going to the schools asking like, hey, what kid needs what? No, we have to have actual paperwork through the schools that we have to get permission from the schools and the parent for the student to get their level of reading or their grades to us. I mean, we, right now, we just do it through the kids' report cards. But then, okay, we see that you have a fourteen. This is a real example, we have a child who has a fourteen in math. Okay, we can help you, but then now I need to go to the schools. What are you working on in your class? I, asking a teacher, this student, what do you see? Is it attention span? Is it not understanding? Does he need more one-on-one explanation? Is it just, does he not, is it, you know, is it dyslexia? Like we're trying to better help him rather than, because the schools, they're having a hard time. He gets frustrated, he kind of lashes out, he shuts down at school, we get him at the center. It's a different environment, different teacher, so it's another restart, reset that he can have in his day. But without the proper full-time person, that is really hard for me to do. I have people that help me now do it, but like, for instance, right now, we have a hundred and fifty-one members in our summer program. We're implementing a reading program into that summer program. It's me and another person. I did just hire another person to help me with the education, but it's part-time. So once this after-school program comes, we're having football, we're having volleyball, plus I have just my normal everyday, today options. So I don't always get to go into schools because I'm doing hard meetings, mostly not academic meetings. And so that's, then I'm not present. And then I have that one person and they're, they're part-time. It's really hard to get that done in those three hours that we have before kids come. Um, so for a hundred and fifty kids, you have three hours to try to contact teachers and, you know, then we're all in this, giving grace of each other's time. So, yeah, I, I have availability from twelve to three to talk to teachers, but that might be that teacher's busiest time. You know, they might only have that morning time. So then it gets really fishy where I don't have a consistent schedule for an education coordinator meetings. And here I am, really stretching myself thin and really trying to cross all these Ts and dot these As. But it's really difficult to serve the amount of kids that we're wanting to serve. Cause we're, I'm, we're trying to become curriculum-based. Meaning like you're not just, we're not a daycare, we're not just a center when you send your kids. We're doing actual activities, actual curriculum-based projects. And with that, I would need the help with the education coordinator. And it's just six hours in the day, they get six hours a day. Three of those hours in our school program are kids, if not four of those hours. Because the Christian school will get out early, sometimes they come at noon. So some days we're having kids, it's right when you get there from twelve to six. But you might not even have time that day, depending on the school schedule, you know. And then with the Christian school and then our school and then Harmony School, we're all on different schedules. So it's not around, I have school Friday or Monday, Christian school will have school Friday. So it's really hard to kind of get into the school just in those little time that part-time's there. And I'm, I just, I'm trying, but I just can't do it completely alone in the full-time hours. And then my full-time employees is my program director, she does the program. And she's doing the sports usually. That's our, her biggest project, sports. And then my receptionist, and I need her at the desk. So then that leaves me to do the schools. I just, I, there's, I just can't do all those schools. And then we work with the college, with volunteers. So I'm, I'm doing a lot of the paperwork, background scenes, so I really need another person to help me in the schools.
So do you have somebody in mind?
Yes, I do. It would be moving a part-time person to a full-time position.
And to clarify, that amount is not a salary, that's all you want, but benefits and fringe and all that.
Right. Well, that's another department that is going to take this job. Release all persons.
Oh, I believe they, I think that is taken program that was.
Dying.
Yes, and made it fantastic.
Absolutely.
Heather, can you talk about, in our meeting, in our budget meeting, you talked about some of the work that y'all did with the, some of the children and how their grade, their reading level improved.
Yes, I do. I have a student, he's a fifth, a fifth grader. Um, he was reading at the beginning of the year at a first grade level. And through our reading program, he is now reading at a sixth grade level. Um, and that's just through this year. So he's, and that's just one success story. I mean, and he's a, of course, a major one, but a lot of, I won't lie, the majority of my kids do not read at grade level. Um, they struggle with certain sites, just basic sight words, sounding things out. Um, so we try to make it, and do challenges, prizes. Right now, there's a competition between staff and kids. You have to read more pages than the staff does. And, you know, I'm sure it's, that's a very small thing, but, I mean, we're doing everything that we can in order to make it exciting, um, helping parents, you know, giving them the books. The library's been very generous, so it's giving them, us donating their books that they don't use. So we have age-appropriate books. That was an issue for us, so now we have like a take a book, leave a book center, you know, giving people incentives. I mean, we, we came a long way, but I just know that if we could actually have more one-on-one time and more time to really focus on each individual's needs rather than just this whole chunk, because, you know, I, it's too many times in the school, you know, kids are given the exact same test and expect to have the same type of results, but that's not, you know, we have a child who, that same child, he was failing his test because he couldn't read the question. He was not understanding even the question. So he would just, I mean, it's a math question, he's writing words. I mean, he just, he's not understanding. And so now that he's, his reading has gone up, his math has gone up. I mean, his math was at about a seventy, he's now almost a ninety, he's at an eighty-eight. When the school ended, so that was a huge strike, you know, it was from someone who had no passing grades at all. And he actually passed his first star test this year. So that was a huge accomplishment. And I'm not into tests and star testing. I, I was a terrible test taker. I'd get jitters and, you know, but if we can build the confidence in them before the test, that makes all the difference. You already have all the pressure of this is a star test, you can't do this, get sleep, no snacks, you're already hyping them up for this test. But if you go in there like, okay, yeah, I know I can't do all these things, but I know that I can read better than my level. You know, we have kids that, it's kind of like an accelerated reader program. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that program, but it's like accelerated reader, where you have these levels. It's becoming now a fun incentive, like kids who are on a lower level getting to, are, are on their grade level, getting to pick like sixth grade level books in your fourth grade, you know, that's a big deal.
Well, how many kids?
So.
Do they afford?
In our, every single one. So in our after-school program, you come in and we have a homework room that we offer tutoring, reading help, homework help, all that. We usually use college kids a lot, they will come in. This is where the educator, education coordinator is really good because throughout the day, they have a list of the kids. Now, once we have this list of the kids, it's easier for us if we can implement this in the beginning of the school year with the parents. So if I can get a paper, like through my education coordinator, get it to the superintendent, get it approved, or then to hand out this paper to the students that we have, so the parents can sign off. Then we have record in the school showing that we can talk to these kids, talk about their grades. And we have parent permission and school permission. Right now, it's been really rough because we're waiting for permission from the school. We get it from the parent, but then when we get it from the parent, we're having a hard time getting in contact with the school member because schedules clash. I mean, they're very busy, they have a lot of people changing. So it's like, we're not even talking to the same people as we initially started with beginning. And so then we'll get a lot of, oh, well, I don't know, I, I'm not sure. You know, so then we have to start all over with a new person. And then it's been, so, and I understand, we're not, that's not something that we can exactly fix. But what we can fix is making sure that we have a person in the schools that can advocate for our kids because it's not a secret. Sometimes our parents either don't do it or don't have the time to do it, or just don't even really know. You know, we had a parent say that they didn't even know that their child was at a seventeen for a grade. You know, I don't know how, but it happens. And so I don't know, you know, lack of time or care or what the reason is, but, I mean, these kids are my kids and I have a responsibility. So I, I do not feel comfortable when I get a report card and you have an eight on there, like how is that possible? Like, how is that possible? And it's, you know, you're a fourth grader and you can't read. And we have some college kids that came and they are not, they couldn't read. Like, we have a list of volunteer rules, and they didn't, he couldn't read it. And I was like, well, I'll read it to you. And it wasn't a language barrier thing. He spoke only English. He just didn't know the words. And it was crazy to me that, how are you in college and you can't read the volunteer rule sheets? But that's, I mean, it starts where they are now. If we don't intervene now and help and show up, because not all these kids have a good home life. They don't have the structure that they need, you know, the support that they deserve and that they have to have in order to pass, you know. Or, or they have huge responsibilities. And so their only little break of time for homework is with us. We have kids that will tell us, like, no, I have to go into the homework room or I won't be able to do it because I have to babysit my brother or sister when I get home. You know, things like that.
But you, you have what, roughly a hundred and fifteen kids?
Uh, enrolled right now, we have a hundred and fifty-one. But during the school year, it's usually about one eighty, um, one ninety. Um, it goes up a little bit more just because it's easier, the bus brings them, parents aren't having to go out their way to drop them off. So our after-school program is bigger, usually.
Like I said, she does Spanish job, but I don't have the issue with her.
I, I don't either. We don't have our kids, and they can't be productive as we need them to be living here. We need to help them as much as we can.
And we also even go above and beyond, like, teach person because they don't even know how to read.
They don't teach that in school anymore.
Kids are signing stuff for us and they literally just print their name. Um, they don't know how to read documents. You know, and the, yeah, it's, it's really frustrating to know that, you know, kids, it's, it sounds cliche, but kids are our future. And if we do not invest in them, then what does our future look like? They're growing up to be doctors and specialists and lawyers and judges and judges. If they can't read or do person, what are we doing?
Community less living.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions for Heather underneath tonight? Thank you, Heather. All right, let's move on to the parks.
Can I ask a question real fast?
Sure, sure.
Did I happen to get the activities expense that I had asked for?
Who?
This is just discussion. We don't want to be the doctor in the office.
Okay, is it on there though?
It is on there.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it. I was just double checking.
Not on there. How much were you asking for that, do you remember?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred? Yeah, I can't see that. You don't have an issue with her asking for fifteen hundred dollars for activities expense?
Yeah.
Want to bring kids?
And your budget's still going down, so.
And I'll keep working on it.
Don't work on it.
Okay. All right, uh, parks. Uh, requesting additional ten thousand ground supplies, ten thousand in pool supplies, two thousand in park tires. Requesting the two thou, two hundred and one thousand in road material, we'll talk about that. Contract labor increase in eight thousand, of eight thousand. Forty-eight dollar increase in cell service. And Edwin, it was weird, it didn't have the full six hundred like everybody else's, if I remember right. Uh, park maintenance increase of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Auto expense increase of three thousand. They replaced, uh, the filters for the pool last year. That was a seventy-eight thousand dollar expense. So that's coming out to decrease. Bonds and seals, uh, increase of seventy-five dollars. Community center expense of ten thousand, six hundred, and we'll get into that in a minute. Uh, capital outlay increase of forty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-one. And equipment, a decrease of five thousand. So, um, total is two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one. However, if the road materials, which I don't believe should come out of their budget, I think that's a separate issue that we can discuss. The actual increase is thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one, which I did, I did two separate ones there, so. So two thirty-two with the road materials, thirty-one thousand increase with. Which actually, if we get the grant, could zero that out here. Uh, because part of what we're looking at is the pickleball court and the amphitheater, uh, which, we'll let Matt start talking to some of the projects.
Picklework for the bids on pickleball courts, the amphitheater, and the park.
So I'll let you talk for some of this, Matt. Um, you want to talk about the, whichever part you want to go to first?
There's a lot of interest in pickleball courts. Um, the school had some courts and now they shut them down, uh, to the public. You have to pay to get in. Our skate park is rarely used, so I'd like to use that area for pickleball courts. The bid is for eight courts, which would put us at tournament size. Um, and I know there's a church in town that has a group that do tournaments. So there's a big interest in that.
So, one of the city council members told me you could use the skate park for that.
That's inaccurate. That, yeah. Yeah, so that, I think what he's getting is that we did, received a grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife twenty years ago. Um, in there, it says that, uh, I think he's a little confused on what he's picking up there. So I think he's believing that since we got the grant, we can't ever make any changes to what we, what has been done in the past. But the grant says, and this is with a more recent one also, uh, it says that, um, you have to keep that as a park for twenty years or longer. There's, there's a timeframe. But as long as it's not ever changed from being a park, you can still do things in there. You can still make changes, so. I was talking to, uh, someone from North Carolina. They had their parks director there, uh, in Denver. And, uh, I looked up their website and they have pickleball courts. So I asked him about that. I asked him how long they've had them. He said about three years. Um, they get a lot of use out of them. Um, they have seniors that use them, different tournaments, uh, things like that. Of course, theirs are indoor, but I don't think we're looking at one indoor, but, uh.
The prices are on page thirteen, and that's for painting. And then, uh, it'd be option two on the, add the base bid for the surface mount post. On the very last page of that stack is a, a bid for fencing around it. Um, but Dana and I have talked about possibly doing it ourselves and saving some money on that.
If you do bid for the fencing in the, uh, pickleball court, you're looking at sixty-nine thousand, two hundred. But, um, Lowe's carries black chain link, it's two hundred dollars a panel for, were they six by, are they six by six or six by eight?
Yeah, I can't remember what that would cost at all, but it was quite a bit less.
Yeah, you'd probably cut that at least in half if we use, uh, use county a little bit. The other project in the grant is the amphitheater for North Park.
The picture that is posted right there is just the general idea of what it would look like. Uh, the underside would be completely closed in, so birds couldn't perch. Uh, the poles would be four-by-four metal, and it would be a little shorter without the, uh, the rock face.
When would, when would we know about the grant?
Uh, it will be.
Rock backs around the posts are rock backs.
There wouldn't be any of that. It wouldn't be like the picture there. It'd just be the post all the way down and, but it would be raised. Yes.
So that someone in the back of the audience would be able to say, is it a second point like the park?
It would be facing the park, uh, which would give it an actual, uh, raise, natural raise. And there at the end is a, a quote from the John Deere House for a zero turn. It's a forty-eight inch, uh, and that would fit our trail perfect. What we have right now, the only zero turn that we have, it's around fifteen years old. We've replaced spindles and all kinds of stuff on it, so.
Would like for you to get a bid on, like a Bad Boy?
Bad Boy?
I've had the Husker and the Bad Boy, and the Bad Boy seems to be quite a bit better machine than what the Husker is.
Okay. A lot of good work.
So kind of to answer your question, um, current budget for capital outlay is a hundred and fifteen thousand. Including those is a hundred and sixty, it goes to a hundred and sixty-four. So it's fifty-fifty grant, thirty and sixty-nine is right at a hundred thousand. So fifty-fifty, that cuts that, that would cut that down actually, a hundred and fifty thousand.
My, my, my concern was even if we do do it, and we do get the grant, if we can still get the money out of the grant. Or do we have to, do we have to wait on the grant before we start, I guess?
Oh, I got you. I, yeah, so, uh, it's for twenty-twenty-six. So this would be the twenty-two, the twenty-six budget, so it would time out just right.
Okay, okay.
You're also including, uh, Pixie Field wiring in, uh, the capital outlay. Um, the shredder and mower. And the wiring is, remind us what the wiring is about at Pixie Field.
So currently, uh, Pixie Field is wired in with the, uh, Eastfield, Kate's Eastfield lights. So whenever you turn on the Eastfield lights, it kicks on Pixie Field. So this is to run it straight off the pole and have its own power source.
They weren't charging a, uh, fee for turning the lights on at the beginning of the season.
They were, but I don't believe that's, I don't think we're doing that anymore. Yeah, it was like a thousand dollars every time you opened the switch.
Yeah. And so maybe that's why they put them together at one time or another.
I think that was the only power source, uh, is to come off that pole closest to Pixie Field, so.
Just didn't want to get a double charge.
Maybe.
If they, if you were to turn on two different ones, you know. But I think that, I think I remember us working with Big Country to alleviate that fee, and they, they did a different basis on how they charged. Just wanted to make sure it's still happening.
And it's a demand, George.
Oh, I think, and it was big. Yeah, exactly.
There was an increase in community center expenses of ten thousand, six hundred, and that's because of the air conditioner.
The air conditioner, we've had it worked on several times, and it's just not keeping up with the building. So we need to replace that.
And road materials isn't actually being added to their lines. Uh, what we did in the past for road materials was to fund twenty-nine that either they could tax for at the time. Um, and we, uh, got the road materials there. So I, I'll ask Angela if we can, are those funds still there for road materials? Or was that just sent?
Well, they went back into the twenty-nine reserve balance because they weren't expended out the year that we budgeted them. So whatever wasn't expended goes back to that fund balance for that fund. So it went back to there.
And it was, it was taxed for that, right? Or was it? And we'd looked at it at the end.
We did. I've also left it, punched another number since then. Um, we did tax, I think we did tax for, yeah, it wasn't the two oh one, but we taxed because, yes. We taxed a hundred and eighty-six thousand something because we had twenty-five-five, uh, abatements.
I know.
Um, so, but we didn't spend any of it, so that went back into the reserve balance.
Right, so the funds are there, we wouldn't be adding to.
Right, we, like, weren't used.
Right, and so that's why I separated it out, the way I did on this.
Sure.
Uh, showing that that's actual expenditures, but not actual funds that will be increasing because it's already there. We just need to do it.
Yeah.
When y'all have time, whatever that is, whatever that is. So any, go ahead.
At least aggregate is available now, which we had two, two years, there wasn't any.
Right.
And unless they start building again and taking it all away.
Right.
And so, yeah, it's, we can, we should be able to get it.
Yeah, okay.
So do you want me, on the budget for twenty-nine, to budget the two oh one as an expense? A budgeted expense? And then it's not going to be, like, on the, on the schedule that I view, it won't be under, um, tax, it will be under other, fund twenty-nine other receipts. But it will be budgeted out, two oh one, under parks, parking lots or something like that. It's a, there's a line in there created for it. I think it's park, parking lot, parking lot roads or something like that.
Parking lot, parking lots, I don't believe the road.
So budget the two oh one in there, not in ten, six, sixty.
Yeah, are y'all good with that?
Good. Yeah.
Y'all have any more that you want to talk about for the parks department? Thank you, man. Extension service. Um, so they're requesting addition, a part-time employee, um, an increase in their part-time to twenty-three thousand, by twenty-three thousand, four hundred. Um, increasing travel expense, two thousand dollars. FCS travel, two thousand dollars. Maintenance and repairs, five hundred. FCS dues down, four hundred and forty dollars. And then we, uh, got the new truck last year for Barry at seventy thousand. So it's a total decrease in their budget by forty-two thousand, five hundred and forty. Um, Derek, I'm going to let you talk to the part-time a little bit.
Okay, uh, so on this part-time, uh, it's, it, it's getting busy. We, we say busy out. Uh, so we're looking for someone that can come in and alleviate some of these, the four-age stress a little bit, and even grow some of our curriculum enrichment, which is where we go into the schools and teach. Uh, I think that's where I find a hard time to, to grow, is finding the time to make those relationships with the teachers. So. So uh, we think if we can get someone in there that can really help us with that and alleviate some of the four H uh, not, I mean, kind of day-to-day stuff that we're, that kind of piles up on us a little bit. Uh, and help manage that club a little bit, we think that would be a, a really big asset to our office and allow us to grow a whole lot.
Do you have kids who are going to be four H now?
Currently enrolled kid-wise, we'll be sitting in one thirty-ish. And that, I mean, that's still with, I mean, I took.
Shooters this weekend to post in Seminole? To go and shoot?
And I'm seeing the same good problem with youth center in, in four H, I mean, growth, and that's what we want, you know?
Yes.
It's a good problem to have, is that you're.
It is a good problem to have, I'm, I'm happy to be here and asking for that. Uh, but it is, it's getting, it's getting full, I missed planning a race trial the other day. Uh, just busy in that morning and couldn't get up to Flavanna to help plan it. Just some of my ag side is slipping from picking up that uh, four H side.
There was also discussion about uh, adding a line just for his trail.
Entitling it.
The.
The.
Travel expense.
The travel expense, AMR.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that.
That wouldn't change any expenses, it's just that it says travel and run as FCA tours. Mine shows the problem.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move over to the enterprise funds. Thank you, Derek, appreciate it. Uh, golf course increases nineteen hundred for oil and grease, eight thousand for ground supplies, two fifty for janitorial, three hundred for operating supplies, Pro Shop merchandise is ten thousand five hundred. I will make the change for contract services here in just a second. Uh, twenty-three hundred for maintenance and repairs, fourteen thousand for leases, fifteen thousand five hundred for capital outlay, forty-one hundred for equipment, and nine hundred for other equipment. So far it's fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two increase, so um. I didn't go. I'm sorry.
Oh, he, Phil thought he was missing something.
Well, yeah, I think I'm, I think somehow I, I'm lying. And my line is lying to sixty, six sixty-one, fifty-seven, ten.
All I'm showing is the increases on this, not the actual budget.
The, but he's correct in his book, when he printed in.
Yeah.
Um, he put uh, something in fifty-seven ten, but I have no documentation for this.
It's somewhere in there, a stack of papers, probably.
So there's nothing in the emails stuff, cause I have the originals right here and I looked to make sure of the parting. I also scanned a many copies, but there's not a.
Was fifty-seven ten?
Yes.
What was it due? You remember?
Well, I've slept since then, so let me think. Should.
Looks like it would be a sixteen thousand increase. One fourteen to one thirty. Fifteen fifty increase. Fifteen five hundred.
Four. Uh, let's see.
So there was.
So we're looking at getting restaurants.
Yes.
And uh, gates for the entrance and the both entrances. Last year, we had a bunch of, was it last year or two years ago, we were getting feels on.
So we were talking about two bathrooms, ten shed doors getting done to get rid of the wooden doors.
Yeah, that's a separate line, isn't it?
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's forty-five hundred.
Okay.
But I have a lesser bid for the doors, the wooden doors out of Midland, and we've communicated. I just fear that he hasn't, this person hasn't actually come on premises and seen what's what.
Right.
Cause I just don't trust that price, cause it's kind of, might be too good to be true.
Yeah.
So I accept, I went with the higher one, just uh, cause I have, I have that one formally, give it to me.
But yeah, adding gates was, and the bathrooms. There's a quote to build it for thirty-four thousand and then containers thirty thousand for bathrooms. I'm still looking at options there. To get those done, and we, we're gonna do those this year, but uh, car paths to precedent on that. They're doing the concrete car paths, and that's what we're getting bid on soon. Still want to know more?
Still want to know.
And how much is that?
Seventy-one thousand, but it's being a five-year lea- lease note.
Is that in the lease or else?
Yes.
We paid off uh, ours this year, so it's an increase of twenty thousand, I believe.
So when you lease them, you know, lease.
Well, yeah, it's a lease to own. So what we would be doing is taking the greens mower and making a T mower and just moving them down. My T mower is probably twenty-four years old.
So uh, we talked about a sixty-month lease, right? At twenty-one thousand a year, seventeen to twenty-one. Now, I think with what we've talked about, it would be the six, twenty-one thousand a year, a little over twenty-one thousand a year.
And I believe we pay off uh, the rough mowers in two years, so in roughly two years, we'd be able, we'd probably be able to pay off the greens mower as well.
Yeah, which is about thirty-eight thousand.
Twenty-one thousand.
How many months, how many mowers are you?
It's a hundred and twenty.
So when we talked, there were three different options, we talked about three different types of mowers.
I wasn't in here, I was gone that day, but you said twenty-one thousand a year for six years, that's not a, that's not.
Increase.
Well, the, the lease is twenty-one thousand a year.
What is your APR?
I'd have to check.
You said the mower was seventy.
Seventy-one, alright, bye.
Is it third John Deere?
Twenty. Lease sixty-one.
Is that that, the other one that's been emailing me? Is that that Gavol that has been emailing me?
No, that's Yamaha.
Yeah.
That's for the carts.
Okay, well, he will have to wait, I'm busy.
And regarding the carts, that's because of that, the existing lease that we have, the lease ago ends in September.
Right.
The Yamaha.
Well, I don't do it, I just get busy doing other things, so he's just gonna wait. But I've gotten multiple emails from Gavol.
Yes. It's a hundred and six, seven eighty-six.
That's a lot of interest though.
Thirty thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand for five years.
Seventy-seven or seventy thousand?
Seventy-one.
Phil, that's a lot of interest, he's got a big circle of equipment for that.
Would you rather?
Unless, is there something else in that lease that makes it that high?
That's by us, is there one or two, like how many mowers it buys?
Two more, but.
It's an extra set of reels with it.
Okay.
Is, what does it total cost then?
To buy it outright?
With the extra set of reels?
The mower is seventy thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. The set of reels is eighteen thousand three hundred and eighty-six.
Seventy-six cents.
Okay, nine thousand. Ten thousand.
So the extra set of reels, the reels last three months before I have to get them resharpened and re-drowned and all. And it's just, I work with the college on that, so I'm able to go there and have them ground. Because it, that price has skyrocketed to have someone come do it now. Yeah, if I had my whole fleet done, would probably cost the county around twenty thousand dollars now, where I need it done three times a year.
Okay, in this lease for the new one? Does it include a five-year warranty with it?
The warranty is four-year. So I can add on a, a year extension.
So that's part of it too, probably, cause they probably don't come with a four-year warranty if you buy it outright, do they?
With most of the time when you're buying, I'm after three, four-year.
You buy it outright, it's three. The lease then it's four.
Lease to own.
That's, that's probably another part of what we're thinking is interest, was that another year of warranty.
Well, that brings the interest rate way down, I mean, that is a big, it does have six, that's a ridiculous amount of interest.
Yeah, that's twenty plus percent, but uh, you might want to check, see it and see what. He says four years warranty. See what that extra year costs, cause it never fails, the minute something goes out of warranty, it breaks. You never fail.
Yeah.
I mean, you might check, they, they might make you a deal, that's just my.
And I can check on the interest rates as well.
That makes, that makes more sense, cause my six and say, just, you can buy it outright.
With the cost of how they're going, it's better to buy them outright, it's, it's hard to lease them now because of the interest rates.
See what the interest rate, what the whole package is, bring back, just sell them all. It may be better to buy it outright.
And this is all preliminary, so we can.
Right.
We'll have time for that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious, settle.
And not only did they do interest rates, a lot of times they'll charge you an extra fee if you go over a certain amount of years. Just like that's not interest, they're, they're getting really creative about how they do those things.
Then you might check, see what a four-year lease is, cause then the payment will be more, but.
The interest will be.
Interest might be less, I don't know. Just curious.
Talk about Pro Shop merchandise, if you wanted to be able to sell more or.
We'd like to be able to sell more, and then specifically in clubs, uh, which, not, not the whole full set, putters and maybe wedges. And you have to buy it before you can sell it, and that was uh, why that, what that is there. Uh, not, I need, we need to test the waters to see if that'll sell, so we don't want to go overboard. Also on the list is with Titleist to do a club fitting, if you, people are gonna do that, they're generally gonna buy the bigger clubs that cost eight hundred, nine hundred bucks, again, you gotta buy them from Titleist, then turn around and resell it. Hopefully a, a profit, well, always a profit, but a nice size profit. Uh, one other thing trying to get in there is uh, we had talked about this at the very beginning when I was interviewed, the sim, the simulators and said, well, we can't do it till we have a building, well, we can do it without a building. We can uh, been speaking with uh, Swing, I believe it's called, is that the one you have, Full Swing?
Yeah.
And uh, it's a launch monitor that we would keep in the Pro Shop and somebody would come in and rent it and take it out there. And uh, it should be another revenue stream. And Sid and I have been discussing ways to make our driving range compatible with it, it's already compatible with it, but to really create a service. But still, they, right now, they would need to be paid for and pay for itself.
And two oh, and that was thirty-six.
So we just, we talked, I mean, yeah, in a perfect world, it's always nice to have a duplicate, but uh, beggars can, you know, who goes on the guy. I've been speaking with this company, I spoke, spoke with a lot of them, there's a, this is a good, it's not the top, top shelf, because that comes with lots of dollar signs, but it's a good middle-of-the-road start to see if it's worth it, to make use of it. And it's just something people who want to, they won't be able, a lot of these, you can, if you have the building, you have the screens, you can create, you can do all kinds of things from tournaments, which make money, to uh, lessons, et cetera. But this is an instance where an individual would take it out, download the app on their phone, see what's wrong with their swing, practice that and improve their game, and that's what all golfers want to do, is improve their game. Now, twenty-first century, you don't really need a person, I tell you, you just gotta be able to understand all the analytics.
Get your yardage and all that kind of stuff.
And I've got thirty-six hundred, was that each or?
That's each.
Each, so we got two oh, we're looking at seventy-two hundred.
That'd be for two, of course.
Blame the live scoring thing that you're wanting to.
Well, I, uh, this is something that, it's called Golf Genius, and we already have it, we have the free version through the Texas Golf Association, because we're a member of the Texas Golf Association, and it's really wonderful, it's fantastic, it's uh, very complicated. The live scoring is something that we did a survey, uh, Sid's group did, of our folks out there. And that, they brought it up quite more than I thought they would, and it's something, the way it works is that we have these tournaments, and as the golfers enter, somebody in their team is designated as, I guess, the official scorekeeper, and correct me if I'm wrong, Penny.
Yeah, I've got it on, we use it at all, at all our tournaments.
And uh, so, so they play and then, you know, this team shoots a three, well, Penny's responsible for putting it in her phone, and the next thing you know, wherever there's, like, people can monitor on their phones, they can come through and see it on a monitor in, in the house, uh, that kind of thing. And it's a, it's one of the, it's one of, one of those attractions, the course is already doing great because of the wonderful shape it's in, and people are coming there from all over, but the more and more that you have the subtleties that set the bar a little bit higher at the rates that they get, which is a bargain, uh, that it becomes quite appealing.
Sure, and you already, you said you're already a member, so the.
But we're a member of the T, Texas Golf Association, which means we are entitled to what's called the basic version of Golf Genius. To ramp it up to the live scoring and get the, some of the other fun things that come with it, it comes at that price.
Right, and the first year is forty-one hundred?
That's the first year, because after that, that, that includes a five hundred dollar startup fee, so after that, it's less.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars each year for that. And then uh, we would include adding TV or a monitor out there.
Yeah, if we wanted to.
Couple of bucks probably for that.
Yeah, I mean.
It also allows you to be able to enter tournaments through Golf Genius too.
Okay, yeah, so you don't have paper signups and all that, it's all online?
It's all online, which is what.
Uh, discuss um, the cart barn, cart barn, adding electricity and some outlets there as well.
Uh, first of all, it's fantastic, thank you very much. There's no, there's no power in there, so uh, working in the dark, in the, when the days are shorter, probably, or in the cold. Initially, we're not, we're not, it's five plugs, two lights, is where we are. Uh, so not, we're not talking ceiling fans or air conditioning or anything like that, we're just, just the very basics, just to be able to plug something in that you had to work inside when it's a hundred and ten, get some place to go.
And that was about thirty-five hundred for what?
About, it was a little bit less actually, yes.
Talked about painting shed doors also.
Painting the uh, the doors, shed doors.
Yeah.
So there's three types of doors out there, there are the old wooden doors, then they are, correct me if I'm giving this the wrong word, Penny, they're old wooden doors, then there's the metal bifold doors, and then there's the first of the rolling doors, and then, that's four types. And then there are the newer rolling doors. Well, we're making great progress in replacing the wooden doors, that's still about twelve to go. And then the bifolding doors, but the original rolling doors that were put in, I don't know when they were put in, anyway, they, all, they're rusting. Anyway, they, all, they're rusting, and I spoke with, uh, David Diaz Panger, and about putting the specific kind of paint it needs so they don't rust and they hold up. And that, and this, again.
About six thousand to paint twenty doors.
Yeah, it's three hundred dollars a door, I think.
They're not rusting through, they're just starting to show the rust, so it's time to paint them.
Yeah, they're, they still work.
I think that covers everything that we're gonna have.
Although we had somebody golfing the other day from South Africa.
Oh, nice.
Just in town, working, wanted to play golf, international.
Okay, any more discussion on the golf course? And I put in the difference at sixteen thousand, that brings the total increase to seventy-three thousand, seven fifty-two. And you're gonna look into lease.
Bill, if you find your papers with a explanation.
I'll get you another one. Like, I'll have to start from.
Scratch.
Yeah.
All right, go over there.
I'm getting better being organized.
All right, thank y'all, appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Airport fuel and oil increase of three thousand, capital outlay fifty-two hundred, uh, that's a fifty-two thousand, I'm sorry. It adds a new courtesy vehicle. Looking at the courtesy vehicles, they are old and worn out.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much. Yes, yeah, and I, I changed it a little bit. Uh, I had three on there initially, but I remembered that, three that were not budgeted. But I remembered that this one actually was, he did budget in there for that. So there are two other vehicles that are in their budgets. Um, park and, uh, maintenance.
Right.
Are y'all opposed to adding those to the budget? I think so, I will, I'll add those in and we'll.
I know one, Pico's, uh, originally out of my budget took the place of one, and I'll just get out, but I talked to, they're on my here, Chevrolet house. You get a brand new R F two? Forty-seven, forty-eight, four hundred and ninety. Of course, it's gonna be black.
You ought to add a thousand dollars from that and get a diesel. I've got, a guy told me he's driven, driven three of them now, forty miles a gallon.
Well, they have two, yes. I've also talked to people that they've come apart.
Oh, is that right?
Yes, but, yeah, it's half of a Duramax, a four-cylinder, it's a Duramax.
Bill, I've seen the six on there as well. That's what the guy had that I was talking to.
Cause I talked to him, yeah.
Had a four-cylinder.
It was a four-cylinder, I remember.
Yeah.
He was getting that forty miles a gallon.
Yeah, that's guy's six cylinder getting forty. That's pretty unbelievable. I got a diesel and he don't get that, thirteen, of course, it's a two. Four diesel.
Solid, I've got, I'm loving, twenty miles a gallon, eighty miles an hour.
That's not bad.
But I've got a F three fifty with a diesel that is eleven.
Know what you mean, pretty sure we'll move.
Okay, let's go over EMS real quick. I say real quick, we'll go over EMS.
Was that a play on words?
I don't know, let's see. All right, so with EMS, uh, the first thing is that, uh, they have done a great job over the last few years by collecting patient receipts. So, uh, we're adding a half million into what, uh, patient receipt says. It's, it's been at a million for several years. We're gonna make it a million and a half. Uh, so that changes that to some extent. Um, with the increases, uh, for personnel, office supplies, safety training, tires, operating expense, EMS education. Professional services, utilities, I think I missed one, maintenance agreements and medical insurance. It's a decrease of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So, um, the big one there is, I, I think all the other ones can, are pretty much explainable. Uh, personnel and professional services are probably the biggest ones we need to go over with.
So, for personnel, I think this is, to me, is the, if you're running an ambulance service for twenty years, this is the last piece of the puzzle. I know, but it's gonna be tight, so I get it. Uh, but it, as the youth center is trying to take care of the kids, the ambulance service is gonna try to take care of the old people. And so what this, um, comes through EMTs, that allows us to pull a person off each shift to take care of our community paramedicine program. Lets us develop a gap care program for those going from tertiary care facility back to the residence that don't qualify for home health, that need a little bit of extra assistance to get them on their feet. Uh, we would go in and install lift, lift devices and make sure that their showers are good to go, that they can help them and, and provide a little extra care when needed. It also helps with our lift assist as a, as a triage system to where we can dispatch a person to help with the triage system on whether they actually need an ambulance or not. So instead of rolling an ambulance, there we lift assist, we would load a first order vehicle, evaluate the situation and determine what resources are needed for the, for lift assist. Fall's our number one call, so fall prevention is key, and this person would help with fall prevention. We would develop a callback program, which we kinda already have right now, but, um, we basically get rid of our survey program and develop a callback program, which we would. Call those people that, uh, make sure that they needed, if they didn't need anything additional services, help with our, uh, what I'm gonna call our frequent flyer program. And help deter those calls a little bit more by going over there and making some data checks, uh, making sure that those people are, are getting what they need so they don't have to call the ambulance all, all the time. It could be as far as helping them with their medications, um, getting those in order, prevent any ER visit for taking too many or not enough of their medications. It's really just whatever gaps that our current healthcare system, pre-hospital-wise, are not covering, we would then try to, to solve those gaps and fill those gaps with, with this person. Um, it also will help fill some open holes on the roster, um, where I'm doing that on, on the, as an on-call basis, um, which is quite a, quite amount of time. Uh, radio's always on, which it should be as a director, but I'm not, I'm actually getting called out, which is fine, part of my responsibilities and I accept that. But this person would also fall into that role, the support role. So if we're doing, uh, two transfers at the same time, then me and that person become that backup to that first act crew. We're currently, we have lost, um, about forty thousand dollars this year in patient receipts approximately, with city ambulance coming in and doing, uh, taking our taxpayer dollars or paying customers, um, and taking them to tertiary care facilities, because we couldn't do it, um, or they didn't give us the opportunity. We've had several discussions with the hospital about that, and they're willing to, to work with us, as always. We're gonna, kinda nervous about the new administrator coming in and who that's gonna be, so there's gonna be some more additional talks to that. But this person would allow us, me to, me and that person to cover an ambulance while we have two transfers out at the same time. So this additional person on each shift, um, would, um, would create a lot of different possibilities that we can do within the ambulance service. Like I said, it's the last piece of the puzzle, um, in my opinion, for, for a complete ambulance service. Uh, any questions on that?
So here's, go ahead, go ahead.
As personnel would be. For what you were talking about, well, people don't qualify.
Yeah.
And when they're not doing that, pick up the gaps in your staff.
Yes, yeah, there, I, I had, I don't know, did you, I mean, Angela, did you incorporate the explanation in everybody's books?
Yeah, they're all in there, all in the back of, our section of the EMS, right behind where it's filled out, he has all his documentation behind there. It has, um, all the explanations, and then right there, he has his statement, and you'll just find, like, he provides a plethora of information. So I made copies of all of that for y'all.
Just use a plethora.
That's the reason, that's the reason I asked him, so I'd have to read them.
Right, yeah, it essentially, it, it, it fills all the gaps, um, internally and externally that, for, for clinical care as well as operational, that we're trying to, to fill.
How often do you get called out on two transfers at once? You mentioned that.
Yeah, here lately, it's been, uh, three times, about three times a week, sometimes four times a week, and a lot of times those are at night. I usually, it, it's usually, it's been averaged about three nights a week that I've got my radio on, covering town calls or backup calls.
I think it's gonna be basic EMTs or?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So with, uh, Medicare potentially being a decrease as far as patient receipts or receipts to you. How much of this is preventative to prevent them from needing that ride, which would then trigger a Medicare or Medicaid?
It's all preventative. I mean, that's the whole point, you know, it's fire, you have the fire system, which has fire safety, and they put themselves out of business by telling everybody how not to, how not to start a fire. So we've essentially tried to do the same thing on the EMS side, where we're trying to prevent falls, we're trying to keep patients out of the hospital by, you know, a lot of patients, let's say you have a heart attack and you come home from Lubbock Heart. And, um, all of a sudden, you don't have anybody there at your house, because your family's in Dallas and you don't have anybody there. It gives us that opportunity to, there's a gap of sometimes twenty-four to seventy-two hours that that patient may not have any care at all. So they just, they just get home. We don't take them home, Lubbock aid or, or TacMed or another ambulance service will drop them off at their house. And this is a coordinator between the case, caseworker and us that would help fix, fix that gap and help that. But it's a prevention system. Uh, right now, there is a, there's a big talk through the EMS community about paying, uh, extra funds, paying for, EMS services to keep patients at home through telemed services, telemed visits. Um, if you, if you'll get an incentive through a Medicare program or Medicaid program that will help keep those patients out. We would have to apply for that, just like we do anything else. We haven't applied, we don't have the resources to do it, uh, but you would look and, and apply to that program.
Explain, again, the forty thousand, you're losing.
Those, that's.
Due to.
Due to city coming in, city ambulance, um, is a, is a very deep-pocket private ambulance service that comes in to rural hospitals like ours and, and basically picks up stuff that we can't do. Um, there is, there is going to be circumstances, but Coggo's got five transfers ready to go right now. And that's an MCI for us, and so we, we won't be able to, to do all five of those, but if they'll work with us and say, hey, we can do two at a time. We can, and they can only get one of the four, or of the five, then that'll help.
Okay.
But they're not gonna do a transfer unless they're gonna get paid for it. So it's, their, their first question when you call them, is the patient gonna pay for this, or is the hospital gonna pay for it?
So what they charge for a transfer?
I have, I have no idea, so. Probably less than we do, because our, our, our rates are pretty, pretty high.
What's your rate?
For transfer, average, eight thousand.
It is free on. Sorry.
It is, it's on, it's on our website, county website, all our charges are on our website.
So we look on there before we call you?
If you like. We can bring the front end loader if you want, from your, from your precinct. That's a good way, and still, let me see. Just bring the front end loader. Um, professional services line, so this line, um, comes with, um, I've actually, uh, Angela and I have agreed, um, to have two categories for this line. And that's like our, um, services for, um, our education program, some of the, the, and our survey program and some other things come out of that professional line, as well as all of our, services for our billing, the billing program, for all of ABS, our third-party biller charges, etc. of that. So when we're making a lot of money coming in, you know, those bills used to be six thousand, now they're like sixteen thousand, so they've increased significantly for that. So the reason we've increased that cost is a lot of those services that used to come out of forty-five hundred are now coming out of professional services.
Anything further for Jason?
And I can get you a list of those professional services if you like, so. I think it's, I don't know if I printed that page out or not, or what, I had a list. I'm not sure if I printed it. For the professional services, what comes out of it.
We're gonna talk to Kyle, because I didn't see him.
Oh, let's be.
And you wanted to increase a little in the education program?
Yeah, I'll have an education coordinator, and we're gonna, uh, we're, we're gonna partner with WTC and South Plains College in order to get any EMT programs started. And, and turned out, hopefully, we'll start that in the fall. Uh, so there's a little bit of extra cost associated with that. Um, operating costs really could stay the same. Um, the only reason I increased those is because of tariffs. The increased in charges or territory, so like, you know what, might as well increase them, I don't know what they're gonna do, because a lot of our medical supplies comes out of different countries. So unless we try to get some sort of agreement, well, those, those could probably either go down or stay the same. But tires are expensive. And they're, they're ridiculous, our tire expenses, so, and.
They're not any good anymore.
No, and so we're having, we had, we've had lots of issues with tires, but, um, this year, and we're expecting to have some of that next year, but. And just as a point of clarification, the medical insurance, um, that Angela handles that, so I wanna make sure I'm not stepping on her toes by.
No, that's not gonna be accurate, so.
That's probably.
The, the new numbers are not in that.
Right.
They're.
Yeah.
Well, did you go off of what's in the, what I sent you?
I did, I just missed this one.
It's based off of with not three new positions.
Right, yeah, this is, this is inaccurate.
Yeah.
I've got that wrong. The three or four?
Three, right?
Three, yeah, one for each shift.
Okay.
Three shifts, one for each.
That doesn't have that one there.
Right, I'll, I'll fix it for her.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm not stepping on her toes, but.
You don't have the professional thing in there?
Okay, I can get that for you. That one's an easy one to print, so. Thank you for looking. Um, again, the maintenance agreements, um.
Everybody's one.
Every, those, the maintenance agreements is, uh, that's our, that's where the preventative maintenance comes in for our medical equipment. So like our credit monitors are, and the reason that went up is because we purchased, um, well, there's a contract actually in there for preventative maintenance for Striker. That's the main reason that went up.
That is in there.
So, I'm, yeah, cause I came back and turned that in, um, separately, so.
So, all right, thank you, Jason. Appreciate you. Let's go back and talk to Kyle, I'm sorry I missed you earlier, Kyle. I didn't see you.
Back there for sport.
Yeah, a thousand dollars increase in travel allowance, and then looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighteen. Uh, it's for a lit, to lift, level and repair the building, that's the quote we received, right?
Yes.
I haven't had an opportunity to talk about their code, to see where they're at on what they saw, so I will reach out to them and see what their, uh, what their numbers come out to be, or what they think will, it'll need, once we, once we do that leveling, of course, that was one quote. We would have to bid that out for, uh, even with the new, one to a hundred thousand, so. And did y'all have any questions for Kyle or me? Okay, thank you, Kyle. Um, Doug wanted to go ahead and do his today, or I told him we would, because he's gonna be out in the next minute. So. Precinct two, an increase in part-time, eighty-four hundred, load material increase, fifty thousand, safety and training increase of two hundred. Utilities, a thousand, maintenance and repairs, seven thousand, you're losing two of those payments, is that right?
This one down.
Or they went down fifty-eight thousand, capital outlays down seventy-six thousand.
How'd they go down?
I don't know.
I don't know, but it went down from this year.
Why? That's weird.
The usual...
I think part of it is because the, like, the skid steer that I got, when we did the budget last year, we included the equipment with it, and so I just take it out.
All right.
That's right.
Plus, I put fifty thousand out on the skid steer.
That's good.
And utilities, I was short last year, so I just bumped it up a little bit.
Yeah, and maintenance and repairs is always going up.
Yeah, and I'm not getting any of the equipment next year, so I figured it's gonna cost me more now, so, it's getting older.
So, that's a total decrease of sixty-eight thousand five hundred and forty, increasing to this budget. We wanna go ahead and do the rest of them and not, in the next meeting? We've got fourteen minutes till lunch.
You got budget amendments, line, transfers?
Yeah, we'll...
Those won't pay me a lot, I can speak fast.
All right, precinct one, uh, eighteen hundred increase in part-time, eleven increase in office supplies, fuel and oil is nine hundred and thirty increase, tubes and tires, eleven hundred and ten. Machine hires, ten fifty increase, road material increase, twenty-one one seventy-five, increase of six hundred, sixteen hundred and fifty in operating supplies, eight fifty increase in utilities, twenty-nine hundred and seventy-eight in maintenance and repairs, increase of a hundred and thirty thousand in lease payments, a decrease of seventy thousand in capital outlay, and increase of eleven ninety-seven in other equipment.
And let you talk to it. And so, all of them, except for the lease payment, can go back to what was last year. I just did that because of all the, how much is going up? Everything seems to be going up, but it'd probably be all right. The lease payment, uh, is because of a year over on the five-year lease purchase for the motor grader. So, that'd be two motor graders, and then, uh, I would sell the, the two that I have that are, have no, they, there's no, I own them outright. So, I would be able to pay most, if not all, for the, uh, new motor graders, possibly, depending, you know, how much more they go up next year. I mean, I think when I bought those, they were three sixty-five, now they're four...
Forty-five. Four and quarter.
So, I won't have much of a payment, I think the thirty thousand may do it. Well, definitely wanna get back to where I'm under warranty. We had, uh, break, one with the less than a thousand hours on it, that the, we started noticing hydraulic oil. And of course, it was past the five years, it's, uh, five years and, I think, two months. And, uh, they had to tear the whole thing apart to get to that one line that was rubbing up against a cowl that caused the leak.
They put the line in a four, you're seeing around it?
Yeah.
So, hydraulic cylinders go out on, scared on one, they had twenty-five hours on it.
So, how many are you getting rid of?
Be taken, I'll be taking, I'll be taking two out, if getting two.
What are the two you're getting rid of?
That's the two new ones.
Good, good, the precinct one. Precinct three, increase in five thousand for fuel and oil, seven thousand for tires and tubes, road material decrease, eighty-five thousand one hundred and sixty, increase of ten thousand in maintenance and repairs, and a decrease of nineteen thousand five hundred and thirty-four in capital outlay. Precinct four, increase five thousand in tires and tubes, road material, three hundred thousand increase, safety and training, a thousand, maintenance and repair, ten thousand, and a decrease of two hundred and ten thousand in capital outlay because of water hole last year.
Well, it's trying to get us where we're about all bank at the same time.
Right.
That's why I wanted to do, was to try to stagger it, and that's why I waited.
Yeah.
So, why do you road material up for your underground? Because I'm gonna start silcoating, get back, try to get back to silcoating ten miles a year. We have silcoated in the last ten or twelve years, like we hoped to, and I've got roads that are absolutely falling apart. Well, I know two.
I know two.
Hey, anything else there? Over for precincts, the increase is fifty-five thousand seven seventy.
And I still got, we had an issue with one blade, I'm waiting to see what happens, but I've still got two blades, they're over eight thousand hours on each of them. One of them's giving us pretty bad trouble right now, so, I'm waiting to hear...
What the verdict will be.
What the verdict is on that. I've still got two inches.
Yeah, they're, they're better than the new. That's the second day. They don't have near as much junk on them.
They're all bulletproof.
You're right.
I think they all ready to move on. Budget discussions, we'll go to certified revenues.
There's two, the first one is, um, the additional revenues in form of proceeds to the payment to precinct four, the road damage from Canyon Wind Energy, County Road four eighty-eight, in amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. There may be a future request by Commissioner Ford, but it affects the class fund, but as of right now, there has, what am I gonna do with that? And then the other one is form of proceeds from Tac unemployment comp surplus, this was four thousand four hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents. We just received a, a check in from twenty-twenty-four surplus amounts for, on our unemployment fund.
Like, most of the surplus, right, maybe it's presenting.
Thank you, all in favor? All right, line item transfers and budget amendments.
There are two line item transfers and one budget amendment. The first line item transfer is precinct three commissioner, the Commissioner Ford precinct three line, auto expense, five thousand three seventy-one oh five, out of road materials from precinct three road and bridge, emergency lights and radio for Commissioner three, precinct three, compare. Then, uh, maintenance, other equipment, three hundred dollars out of maintenance and repair, need to replace a war, a war out, a war out, trainer. That's what it says. I'm reading the words. Budget amendment, it's the Helixon Administrator, um, this is the, rest of the annual, uh, maintenance for the ESNS that she talked about last, last week. We got the final bill for two thousand eight ninety-three oh eight.
Like, mostly a true line item transfer, budget amendment, that's presented.
So, all in favor? Councilman P.
Councilman P. is one million five twenty-one eight seven three seven six.
Play the bill.
Don't they get good? So, all in favor? So, with the budget discussions, that'll be the last one, since we covered all, all of them. And remember, this is all preliminary, everything can change, nothing can change, we don't know yet. Until we get our numbers after July twenty-fifth, we will discuss budget again the first meeting of August, and vote on it on the nineteenth of August. And we will adjourn for this. Where's your ball? Yeah, I think it's the same one.
But you need to give me small hard facts here, buddy.